Scared of Saint Booth. I think there is a large number of authorities in Middle England, to use that famous phrase, who also are suffering, who also don't understand what we're doing to them. We need to create that coalition of local governments being treated unfairly, irrespective of whether you happen to be concerned to do Birmingham, for instance, or independents. I'm going to also say quite honestly, the smaller parties are all lumped together with the independent group and the Greens there as well, and several other small parties are. And the independent group are absolutely frustrating. The willingness to have any debate about the government position is wrong. It almost, you can't say it, or we can't vote the votes. We've got to be subservient. I mean, that's the attitude, that's the attitude of large members of the LGA. So I think, I think if Tom drove the moment about being diplomatic, I have to say, I think the time for being diplomatic is well gone. We can't afford for our residents to be diplomatic anymore. We can't afford to be diplomatic. We can't fudge the issue anymore. Local governments, and it's not just Liverpool, is a treated appallingly. And you can't even make point if our national public service had been treated in the same proportionate reductions. There would have been heartbreak in this. But it's easy to pass on local government because they're not being able to vote and cut that. And I think we do need to take the diplomacy off and start taking robustly. Because if we don't, nothing will change. And that's why I would support the main motion without the first amendment.
Thank you, my lord. I will speak now and then I will formally move the amendment as it's going to be accepted. I actually substantially agree with the critique and indeed the criticism of the LGA made by Mayor Anderson today. I'm actually the only person now who's been an office holder of some sort of the LGA since the day it opened for business on the first of April nineteen ninety-seven, when it was formed by a merger of the three existing local government bodies. At that time, the LGA was far more robust. Its first chair for the first seven years was Jeremy Beecham, the former Labour leader of Newcastle Council, and he was quite prepared to stand up to the Labour government if it needed to be stood up to. Indeed, we did a lot of things together, including, for example, stopping the Labour government from showing the idea of police, elected police commissioners, although that was later, of course, brought back in by the Tories. But what's clearly happening now is that the LGA has become too subservient to the government. Now, no party has ever controlled the LGA. It's always been balanced. There have always been four groups there. But usually, it has been far more robust than it has been over the last two or three years. Of course, just as the mayor, as this council has got the Tory government, you cannot always go into government, you cannot always take a cannon with you. You have to be robust, but also accept the fact that they're the government. But what's happened is that too many press releases, too many statements have been brought down to give a position which isn't reflective of the four groups, but is really reflective of just one group. A group that is now the biggest party in the LGA by just point two per cent. So it's not as though they're nearly in overall control. They'd have more rights if that was the case. They're there, the LGA is held to represent all of us. So I have increasingly felt that, and I was very pleased therefore, that the mayor put down this motion, and I'm even more pleased that he's accepted the amendment. We're moving it as a positive way forward to try and do something to correct the livelihood that's now seriously imbalanced within the LGA.
Is there anybody further to speak on this amendment? Because if not, I think I want to take the vote, okay? Yeah, okay. Can I take the voting for this amendment, please? The amendment, yeah, just, just to count the points. Okay. Those in favour of the amendment? Those in favour of the amendment? Those against the amendment? Abstentions? Okay, the result is four, four. And again, seventy-seven, no abstentions. So the result of the amendment is that it has been lost. We've now got councillor Kemp's. It's an addendum, it's not an amendment now, it's an addendum. So do you want to speak to it?
No, it's a volume.
Oh, volume, okay. So we've now got speakers for the main motion. Who wants to speak? No? Okay, can we move into the vote?
Move.
Excellent, I'll agree, okay. Those in favour of the amendment? Substance?
Agreed.
Is it agreed unanimously?
Yeah.
Yeah? Did you spot that? Actually, turn some events on, Mayor Anderson, over here, and councillor Anderson. I invite Mayor Anderson to move the motion standing in his name, please.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just very briefly, I think the motion largely speaks for itself, but I think it's really important to recognise the work that is done right across the city, in our communities, and also the major events that take place in the city, whether it's sporting or cultural events. And quite often, when they occur, you know, people do come to the council and do thank the individual organisers of the event. And quite often, it is those main organisers that do get thanked. And I think it's really important, when we've had such a fantastic year of events, and we've got many more events to come in our communities than in our city in seventeen, you know, to two thousand and eighty, that we don't forget all of those people that make these events possible. And staff that very rarely, partners very rarely get mentioned, like staff in licensing, people who actually prepare a lot of the documents in and around, the back staff, if you like, and the officers who prepare all the police applications, et cetera. And also, you know, our partners in Glendale, neighbourhood services, who particularly with the community events, give a lot of support to local councils in organising those events. Our street planning teams, our enforcement officers, you know, the many stewards, and most of all, those volunteers. We've got a city of fantastic volunteers, those volunteering in their own community, and all of those who come together for our major events, time after time, who've become fantastic ambassadors for our city, and they were pure enough every time that we have events. So I'd just like to place on record, Mayor Anderson's, and my thanks, everybody who takes part, or particularly those volunteers who give so much and actually sell our city so well in delivering such an amazing sum of events and beyond.
Yeah, I completely agree. I think since being the Lord Mayor, I've been, I've done lots and lots of weekends and meeting people, and people from all over the country, and sometimes from other countries who come along here, and I'm just amazed at the events that we've put on. And just a quick mention for the selfie challenge last Saturday, that was absolutely brilliant. And the fact that a very councillor here was just, and her team, were just absolutely amazing. Congratulations, she won the gold. It was an incredibly well organised event, and I hope it takes place next year, because Amber Dalloway will go next year, so just thought to mention it. Have you got any other speakers on this motion? Okay, good. You?
Hiya. I just wanted to speak, we did annual wards and county ward, did a cross-ward event in Stamford Park with councillor Rachel Byrne this summer. And, 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 and I've been attended as well, and it was a fantastic event, to see people from two different wards coming together. And I was speaking to, I didn't speak to a lot of people, because I left a little bit earlier, but the people I was speaking to, or we didn't even know that this was going on today, they just walked past by chance. And I know that a lot of promotion had been done on social media, but it was just great to see people in the park, who weren't going to come into the park, but did for that day. And for the children as well, because the events were all free, the children who really wanted to come into the park just got like a little treat that day. And it was fantastic in the middle of summer when parents are found it's so difficult with money and costs in the ward, which are so highly populated with people living in deprivation. It was a great, great event, and I know one of the volunteers who was watching in Stamford Park, absolutely fantastic, loved it.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no other speakers, I'm going to say, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I think it was absolutely phenomenal when we made mention of the staff. I just want people to, rather than, we didn't read it out, we're probably trying to go for the record, and maybe earlier to cancel tonight, but read what was presented, what was put on this year by this council. Read it, it is absolutely phenomenal, and I can promise it will get better next year and in eighteen as well. So just rejoice at that, but also celebrate the fact that we've got a culture team, an events team, a team at the ACC that is set to turn up and deliver over beyond the coal which is equally lots of resources. That's what we're doing, and we're not a cop.
So unfortunately, now that Mayor Anderson's wound up, I can now take the vote. So those in favour of the motion? Agreed? Okay, agreed. Okay. The scandal of food poverty by councillor Jane Corbett Frank Holt. Can I invite councillor Corbett to move the motion standing in her name, please?
Yes, I think the motion is standing in my name, Lord Mayor. Shall I speak first, is that okay? Okay, Lord Mayor. This motion highlights, again sadly, the scandal of food insecurity in this city, and asks the chief executive to write to the prime minister, Theresa May, asking her to share with us the government's food insecurity strategy. And if no strategy exists, to agree to formulate a draft one and put it out for consultation before the end of this calendar year. It's interesting to note that this government has signed up to the UN Sustainable Development Goals, including a commitment to, in quotes, 'create sound policy frameworks at the national, regional and international levels, both on pro-poor and gender-sensitive development strategies, to support accelerated investment in poverty eradication actions'. And the first two Sustainable Development Goals, which are to end poverty in all its forms, this is the government that signed up to this, end poverty in all its forms everywhere, and end hunger, achieve food security and improve nutrition. Really? Did they actually read the document before they signed it? Or did they alter wording to read, oh, except of course in the UK, when our government policies cause and create poverty, and we just expect people to sink or swim? And let us not forget that it was Theresa May, this so-called pro-social justice prime minister, who personally took us out of Labour's Equality Act, after it was agreed by Parliament, the crucial duty to tackle socio-economic inequality. But this Labour administration, Liverpool, has kept that as a priority and included it within our own Equality Act assessment framework. It makes me sick to piss my stomach and so angry that thousands and thousands of our children, young people and adults here in our city are being forced to survive on such low incomes, day after day, month after month, and now, year after year, that they constantly have to make impossible choices between eating on eating, paying for their children's clothes or keeping a roof over their head. And it's not as if the government doesn't know what they're doing. They've been told repeatedly, backed up by hard, infatible evidence. And last week, the Joseph Branch Foundation launched their Poverty in the UK Consultation Document, calling it why we need to act now, highlighting the extreme urgency of the action media by government, business and local councils. But this is nothing new to us here in this city. Six years ago, the mayor set up the Fairness Commission, and since then, all the things has ensured we've been putting serious money into our system support scheme, our BMS team, our discretionary housing payment scheme, along with continuing to shelter those in the lowest income providing council tax support. But let's celebrate today the incredible effort of our fabulous play partnership, coordinated by LCVS and NPA, who through Liverpool's voluntary community faith sector, and with funding from our community budget, the Mayor's Hope Fund, businesses, the CCG, public health and our own council's neighbourhood funds, have ensured that over seventy play schemes provided fifty-four thousand meals to our children during the summer holidays last year. And this year will be even greater numbers. But this has been happening during the last four summer holidays, and during every single school holidays over the last two years, which is seen as our play schemes delivering on this play healthy element, ensuring that children, and sometimes whole families, prepare and cook healthy food together, and no one is left out or stigmatized. Our children in Liverpool go to our play schemes, go home at the end of each day with a smile on their face and food in their bones. So we are already working hard to deliver those first two UN Sustainable Development Goals without being told to or signing pieces of paper, because that's what Liverpool's about. And I learned that by footy, when I first came to this great city back in nineteen seventy-four as a school kid, to help out on the summer play scheme, that's the Pies and the Shoes Youth Club, which, thinking about it, councillor Roscoe's mother, Joanie, was running that year. She told me and put me in my place, I continue. But we are also working hard right upstream to stop people being pushed into the river in the first place. And like Desmond Tutu always asking, who and what is upstream that's causing this to happen? So working upstream, that's where our fair city framework comes in, where we are ensuring and promoting the real living wage, no inappropriate use of ZIRRAS contracts, fair term in additions, training apprenticeships opportunities in local spend. And that's why we're working and using the principles of purpose-driven responsible business with the Blue Print for Better Business Charity down in London. So lastly, how will Theresa May respond to this motion? Will she ignore it and look the other way? Or finally, take some responsibility for her government's shameful policies that are causing so much damage to our citizens and change course and take action based on social justice and fairness? Well, let's watch this space.
Thank you, councillor Corbett. Councillor Hunt, you're second in this, do you want to speak now?
Yes, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I know it's obviously illegal, but I've been in the city over the past years, Jen Corbett's been in the city. But like councillor Corbett, I welcome the Echo campaign on food poverty. But, I have to say, there's always a but when we refer to the Echo, isn't there? Long before the Echo discovered food insecurity, this Labour group, this Labour council was working with community and volunteer groups in the city to coordinate activity to tackle the problem. As councillor Corbett said, we set up the Fairness Commission five years ago to scope away poverty and exclusion impacts on our most vulnerable citizens, to suggest an alternative approach to scope out the problem. Long before any media campaign, the mayor appointed a cabinet member for fairness and social inclusion, a role that councillor Corbett tackled with energy and compassion. And long before local commentators acknowledged food insecurity, councillor Corbett had set up a citywide task group, which she called Chairs with Bishop Paul Bates. Now, that task group brings together faith groups, community activists, our partners in the education field, in the health field, to coordinate a robust response to food poverty in the city. There's lots of things going on on food poverty in the city, what's happening. And there's been at least two letters to the Echo from councillors in this chamber today. Councillor Mitchell, councillor Jared, Jared put something in about the great work that's going on in his own ward. So all of us engaged with that activity, recognise, recognise the good work that food banks do. Food banks are not the only solution. In effect, some of us have said many times that food banks are represented fairly by our society, are fair to support the most disadvantaged, and we have a government that now punishes people for being poor, for being in food poverty. But what I always say when we talk about the food banks is that we must recognise that our work and the compassion shown by the volunteers and the groups in the food banks, who work day in, day out, and give so willingly of their time to help fellow citizens. Jane spoke about the Play Healthy Programme, which provides play, food, and in addition to play and food, which is so important to those kids and their families, it provides support, advice to families about all the benefits, about appeals, about the whole sanction system. So that Play Healthy Programme is there, it's providing support for our citizens during every school holiday, not just the summer holidays, throughout all school holidays. And I believe it's worth saying that it's a great example of the coordination of activity already in place in the city, where we work with voluntary and community organisations, we work with the clinical commissioning group, with the education sector, all our partners to provide additional support every day during the school holidays to those kids who are at risk and their families. And, you know, I would urge every councillor, anyone who hasn't been along to those days, to see what goes on, to see the joy on the kids' faces, to see the families welcoming the support they receive, grandmothers, grandfathers there with the grandkids, eating together, working together, coming together. There's no silver bullet to solve food insecurity, there's no one answer, there's no campaign that will resolve it. But as a council, I believe we will continue our work and Jane's work with the faith groups, with the community groups, with the food banks, to solve the problems. We'll do it by acting together, as we always do in this council. Support the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I've got three speakers at the moment, I've got councillor Beaumont, councillor Chancellor Oliver, do you know it? Have we got any other speakers? Oh, right, I'm sorry, yes, right. Yes, sorry. No, not to you, no, not. Garry, I'm just official, yes? Okay, so, Tim Beaumont.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor, this motion provides a great opportunity to pay tribute to the main organisations in our world of Picton, that have done so much to serve our community struggling with food insecurity. We, over the years, have supported the Food Share Scheme, where supermarket surplus food...
Tim, just stand on two seconds, while I really, very hates the... Did you get, just go quickly, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Carry on.
Thank you.
Where supermarket surplus food is used to provide meals for families during the summer. We've already discussed the summer play schemes, but I think I really want to highlight what happens in the many events we put Picton Shorestar Centre, whose staff have been tirelessly serving the community for almost a decade now. Over the last twelve months alone, one hundred and fifty-seven people have attended the Recipe of the Week scheme, where families pay a pound, they get a bag of food ingredients and a recipe, and that feeds a family, that feeds four people. Hundred and sixty-six have attended a free community lunch, sixty-one have attended a baby food session provided by Cash for Kids. And all this only in the last twelve months, and there are many other things that have been taking place over that period of time. But the Shorestar Centre has also given out seventy-seven food bank vouchers. The Central Liverpool Food Bank is one of the busiest in the city. Recently, it launched a new food hub service where residents can pay two pound fifty subscription into a food club rather than just having the voucher scheme. Now, I wholeheartedly pay tribute to these efforts, but I deplore the circumstances that have made this the new normal. Food insecurity means that millions of people across this country now struggle to address one of the most basic human rights, and that of being able to feed yourself. And in that struggle, people are more likely to resort to cheap, high-calorie, low-nutrition food, high in fat, sugar and salt. The food crisis and our health crisis go hand in hand, and the government's recent woeful response to this possible, to this public health problem, deplored by professionals and celebrities alike, will oversort, store our problems for our health service in the future. But that inadequate response is in keeping with our government, that appears to have no interest in making sure that working people who have been are healthy and have enough to eat. This situation was created by the coalition, a government's decision to perfect deficit by taking money away from working age people. Six years on, the deficit is still there, but people are poor, people are having problems with food, and there's no sign of this diminishing. Councillor, what is going on in the UK regarding welfare and social justice is profoundly wrong. My comment is probably best summarised by the words of the Old Testament prophet Isaiah, who said, 'Woe to those who make unjust laws, to those who issue oppressive decrees, who deprive the poor of their rights and withhold justice from the oppressed of our people, making widows their prey and gobby the fatherless.'
Thanks, Tim. Can I just remind you that there are six people who have got to stand up for an extension?
Yeah.
I'd also remind you, if you keep having extensions, we're going to announce the time for speakers as well, so we need to be really careful. Councillor Sullivan.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Hi, Lord Mayor. Most of us in this chamber have a story to tell. A story to tell about our life experiences, some good, some bad, some tragic. The tragedy predominantly occurring when most of us were, had been adults. Adults with life skills, coping mechanisms and emotional intelligence. What coping mechanisms and life skills are hungry children and their families supposed to have to survive in twenty sixteen? I ask you. In the nineteen sixties, as a young child, I didn't permanently experience poverty, but I lived in an area where most did. Indeed, hunger, lack of good clothing, heating was the norm just along the road from here. Children had blather, were often deprived of hunger and cold, and I can recall my own mother bringing them into our flat, washing them and giving them something to eat. That's what people have all the good old days. Nothing good about it. Social services practically lived in my streets. What this turned on made to most of these children was unforgivable. It made a lot of them angry children, and indeed they grew into angry adults, stopped them achieving academically, and they were singled out in a negative way by many teachers for being unkempt and falling asleep in the classroom. Once again, the good old days. The good old days are with us, and the suffering unquantifiable and unjust. The next motion, number twelve, that restrictions on grammar schools are to be lifted by this government, is a further indictment, Lord Mayor, of how working class people and their rights to a fairer system, affording them the best opportunities in life, is not even on the list of priorities from this government and never ever will be. Please support this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Welcome councillor Sullivan's contribution. And there are many stories, I'm sure, that people could tell in this chamber, of my own, a background growing up in a family where my mother did without food, you know, it's a failure. Perhaps she does remind me later on that, perhaps she shouldn't have done that. She looks like... But she came from a family of moral line, where food insecurity was a deniability. And as I say, there's plenty of people in this room who are able to tell the stories like that. I just wanted to take a slightly different tack, Lord Mayor. The issue of how do you feed the city is part of fashion and policy, and not simply for the obvious reason, when you look at it. And that is because food security is an issue that applies not just to the few poor people in this city, it actually applies to all of us. It's a very real concern for all of us, given how we approach our food system from funding to supply, sorry, from farming, to supply chain, to processing, to delivery, to retail. It's a very precarious, precarious position that those of us living in an environment face up to, we just don't see it every day. Those who can recall the petrol strikes from over a decade ago will certainly remember the impact that that has, and how reliant we are on that just-in-time system in order to feed us. It really demonstrates just how vulnerable we are. There's a statistic I have, I think it's appeared to my talk about and the precarious nature of cities. And as the World Health Organisation suggests, we need 0.7 hectares per person to live on a vegetarian diet, all here to vegetarianism. My farmers' butcher told you where I lie. On that basis, the city of Liverpool, given the size of the city, if we were to knock down literally everything that you see and give it over to supporting people on that 0.7 hectares per person, we have 475,000 people in here, we could support just under 16,000 people. That demonstrates just how vulnerable we are as a city, and it's the same for most urban environments. So when we talk about food insecurity, and I'm glad that councillors like councillor Corbett brought forward the issue right at the sharp end, we should all realize that food insecurity is something that we all face up to. I'm glad that councillor Corbett has also agreed that myself and councillor Beaumont and others, including the Liverpool Food Network, will look at that wider issue of food security and how we feed the city. And when I speak to other cities around the world, they recognize just that issue as well. This administration is passionate about addressing the problems that we see at the sharp end, but also passionate about addressing those more systematic issues as well. So I wanted to add that context to the discussion that we have here this evening. And I hope that not only will we support the motion in front of us, but we'll join in trying to address those wider challenges as well.
Councillor, just sorry, councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll meet us quick. Be glad. In the, it's a serious point. In the 60s, I wish I found a Mrs. Sullivan to take me in, because we had no food, we had no money, we had made out of clothes. And when I was 12, I got my first job, my second job and my third job, because I wanted to eat and I wanted to wear a nice jacket and maybe a tie. And that's why I'd wear stuff like this. Now, I didn't eat. So I go and see a school when I was a Lord Mayor, and the children I hear were once in a failing school a year before. And thanks to the great leadership of the City Council and councillor Corbett, councillor Small and councillor Orr, things are changing. And a decision was made at that school, that it was a failing school, and one of the main strategies was food security. And that teacher, the head teacher, fed every child of over 200 children fussing in the morning because it's the first food they'd had from the previous day at being at school. For whatever reasons, the children weren't being fed at home, but they came in and the teacher fed them. It's now one of the United Kingdom's best schools. They've changed with the absentee rates from 91% attendance levels up to 98%. They win gold awards for literacy and for numeracy, and they do amazing things with the environment, and the school's inspired. And I wish I went to that school when I was that age, because that's what security brings you. Brighter kids, happier kids and a better society. And that's what the City Council actually allows to happen. So well done to the leadership in this council and in our schools, because we need to see more of that. And I wouldn't have had to get a job at 12 and coo for my family, but that's what we did. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mitchell, and then for the mind-up this evening.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I'll declare something of interest. I check Trust and Trust Food Bank, another Liverpool one, Knowsey Food Bank. It's not on the city map, but we're very close in the Trust and Trust Food Banks. Across the city north, central and south. And councillor Hunt is quite right, we've been doing it for five years. Thank you for the echo to actually noticing that people have been hungry for that time. But we should all need to recognize that the only way to make a solution to this is by working together, by actually bringing the resources that everyone has to the table. All food banks are, are sticky plastic. You have to deal with the underlying reason why somebody is believing. And so the Trust and Trust Food Banks give back-to-work support, they give debt advice support, they work to empower people out of that poverty, which is what we all need to do. And this should not be a contest. I can say, a chair of the big headquarters, Knowsey Food Bank, R.A., our Dave and our Board, has said, "R.A. is to close it down." And let me tell you, the day we close it down, I'll invite each and every one of you to come and raise a glass, because that'll be a great day. That'll be a great day. The only thing we can do is if we work together to deliver the things, not fight among ourselves, not argue about food poverty snobbery. This is about the basic needs of human beings who live in our city in the fifth richest economy in the world. And I say it every time, it is to our collective shame that we have food banks across our city region that fed last year 60,000 people. Let's all work together to eradicate it and come and join me in the celebration.
Thank you very much. I think that's been a really good debate. Jane, can I ask you to wind up the evening? Everything's been said, Lord Mayor. I just thank you as well, particularly councillors on the ground who put their neighbourhood funding in and just makes such a difference. And also it gives hope to the people who are also doing it alongside of them. So just picking up on what people said about working together, please. Because that's the way it works. It works superbly. Brilliant, thank you. And go to take the vote now. Those in favor of the motion. You know us. Okay, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. Now going on to the debates about grammar schools. My councillor Nick Small, Larnar, John Printon, Alice Fennett. Can you invite councillor Small to move the motion standing in this area?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's many issues facing schools in Liverpool today. There's a crisis in vocational and technical education. There's a new funding formula potentially coming in for schools in 2018 that could see Liverpool schools funding cut by up to £20 million a year. And there's a divisive preschools and academies agenda that's trying to set school against school. Grammar schools and selection viability isn't one of those problems facing our schools. It doesn't resolve the issues that our schools are facing. And since 2010, Lord Mayor, this administration has built 16 new schools after building schools for the future were scrapped. We've created the Liverpool Learning Partnership to keep the family of schools together. We've created School Improvement Liverpool as a local authority trading company. And we've set up Liverpool Challenge to drive up attainment and to identify shared priorities amongst our schools that are right for Liverpool. And we're working to make school admissions fairer with some announcements coming in the next few weeks and months on that. And, Lord Mayor, this is why we oppose selection viability. We reject this Tory plan to lift the ban on grammar schools, to open new grammar schools. And for every grammar school opened, we can see five new secondary modern schools opened. We reject it, not just because it's unfair, and it is unfair. There's a tiny number of children on preschool meals, children qualified for pupil premium who attend grammar schools across the country and attend a grammar school in this city. But we also oppose it because educationally it's wrong. Selection doesn't work for anybody. It doesn't increase the performance right across the board. It doesn't increase performance for any one group, including the brighter students, including children who are gifted and talented. It doesn't benefit anybody educationally. And I'm really pleased that the MUT came along tonight to show their support with this. I'm pleased that the other teaching unions, ATL, NASUWT, have also got behind this. Because what we need to do, Lord Mayor, is to build up a broad-based campaign with all parties supporting it, with parents, with teachers, everybody right across the board supporting this, to say, "We know what works in Liverpool", and to say to Theresa May, "We reject this bankrupt idea, this 1950s idea of grammar schools and selection viability, not in this city."
I think councillor Small. I've got, who's actually second in this motion? Okay, do you want to speak, Larnar or? Do you want to speak now then, since you're second in it?
Councillor Mayor, I am pleased to second this motion. I just wanted to say that, a small note. I sat and watched Justine Greenham give evidence to the Education Select Committee, and I set aside a couple of hours because I was hopeful that there might be some recognition from Greenham that they've got it wrong on grammar schools after he tested the bugling reaction. And to be honest, in the beginning, there was some glimmers of hope. Greenham was willing to say that she didn't think that proposals brought forward in May about parent governance were helpful, and she was willing to go back and look again. She was willing to genuinely consider looking at making PHSC in our school statutory to ensure our children have a more balanced education. And she was willing to confirm that she's looking forward to bringing in changes to ensure fairness for someone born children sooner rather than later. So I was hopeful. But, Lord Mayor, that's where the bill has ended. When it came to grammar schools, Greenham was defiant. When she was questioned on the evidence base, do you know what she said? She said, "Well, sometimes we just have to try things and just see how it goes." Now, I think that as a councillor, we should put on record how disgraceful we think that is and how uncomfortable it makes us. Yes, we all know that we're about innovation and creativity and change to get the best for our children, but that's not what this is. What we should never do is support a tried and ever approach to our children's education. And we should never, ever accept a "let's just see what happens" approach to raising standards. Their approach doesn't sound very aspirational to me. And we should be telling the Prime Minister that our children deserve more than such a haphazard approach to improving standards. Councillor Mayor.
Councillor, councillor.
If I can pick up on the last point, let's try and see what happens. Well, actually, we have. As a society, I can remember Shirley Williams, as a Labour minister then, having to roll back grammar schools. And the trial and error was a trial and error there. It was a trial and error that didn't work, because not only did it disadvantage people who came from families who didn't have a higher educational background, and that advantaged those people who tutored their children for the level of classes. That was quite established. It's there. That's fair. But it also happened with people who were late developers in life, people who may have failed level class or could have failed level class, could then go on to get university education. And when the secondary moderns came in, and as was in that generation, the literature idea that came in, lots of people who did fail level class, who were put into low-achieving schools or would have been, then went on to actually go on to get professional examinations and degrees. So when the point is made, and I think in a positive way, "Let's try and see what happens", as a society, the United Kingdom has tried and seen how it's felt. We, not in that kingdom, it's got to have a far superior educational system. England and Wales have tried grammar school systems, and has found, been found wanting. And it actually creates a system of low achievement, no aspiration. And it also does want something else, and I think that's the one thing that I think we need to discuss. It actually socially segregates people in communities between those who expect to achieve and those who expect not to. And when you start segregating people as early as eleven-